Okay.
Everybody in?
Uh huh. Are we all here? See, we've got, who are we? We're missing Commissioner Jennings still, yeah?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Jeffrey, able to start your video? I can't see your video. I can just see.
Oh, yeah. He's gone now. Hi, Dennis.
Good evening, guys and girls.
That's us.
Mr. Jennings, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Oh, are you able to start your, are you able to start your video?
No, I did. I don't know why.
There it is. There it is.
Thank you.
Okay, it's 6:31 and I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting of February 7th, 2022. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. That's me. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the Raise Your Hand button. It can be found in the Reactions button on Zoom when the public hearing for the item is opened. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute each from each speaker that defers time for a maximum total of eight minutes. Alex, you've shown the slide already. Thank you. So, may I have an approval of the agenda, please?
I can't see anybody, but Mr. Chairman, I'd like.
Excuse me, if I could do the roll call first.
Oh, please.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Mazza.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Wetton is absent. Vice Chair Smith.
Yeah, here.
Chair Hill.
Yes, here.
And we have a quorum.
Sorry, I didn't have that on my new improved agenda here. So now we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, I'm the following, that we place items 7A, 7B, and 7C at the, right after the consent items. And then continue item 5A to a date uncertain, 5B to a date uncertain. And this is a new one, 5C to a date uncertain. The reason for that is you will have received in the last 10 minutes or so, the staff report and resolution for the December 5, 2005 CDP on that property in which the City, the Planning Commission determined the neighborhood character area and granted a variance for three stories.
Neighborhood standards you're talking about, right?
Standards. I'll never get that right. Jeff can correct me.
Always do, John.
And, and determine that all the basements on the north side of sea level daylight. So, that's a material change. You should have it. Should have gotten five minutes ago, but I know you don't have time to read it. But it materially changes the whole application. So I'm putting it on as a continue to a date uncertain unless staff wants to put a date certain on that item.
Any comments on that? He's, Commissioner Mazza is proposing both the entire agenda but also the continuing 5C. My sense about it is, and having looked at what was sent out just now for like literally five seconds, that it may very well be a basis to continue, but sounds like it is. And my, my wonder would be, do we want to have any discussion first before we might get to that point?
Yeah, I think it's typical that we, that we deal with it as a separate matter, not as a, as part of the fundamental laying down of the agenda for the evening. I looked at what came in just a few minutes ago for probably less than five seconds. So I don't really know, and I'd like to hear a discussion from staff about the relevance of the documents that were sent to us rather than, and I'd like to hear from the applicants about what they think about it. So that would be my preference. John, you made a motion. I, I will. John, you made a motion. I, I will. Yeah, I don't know. I could ask you for a friendly amendment, but that probably doesn't make any sense, unless you agree to just have a discussion about whether to continue it once we.
Well, what, what, one question might be that, that I'm sure the applicant has a number of experts with them tonight, whether, you know, it might behoove them to release them now if we thought that's where we're headed, but.
Well, my, my question, my question would be for Trevor, can we do this in setting the agenda?
The first, first question I have, Richard, is staff recommending the continuance of five C also? I haven't seen this item that, what the, the recent report that came in or what this new information is.
No, we aren't. This is a different project, and the previous director was aware of this substantial, or excuse me, neighborhood standards determination. And she actually, and the applicant Darren Domain can speak to this too, as he was in those meetings and I'm not, I wasn't, I'm just looking at notes and what I understand. My understanding is that Bonnie looked at this in a number of different ways, and she believed that the neighborhood standards that was done before was while it was presented to the council or planning commission, and it was voted on by the planning commission. It did not, in her opinion, meet the letter of the law in sense of following a strict adherence to what, to how you conduct a neighborhood standards determination. And so that is, like I said, this is a new project, and the way the neighborhood standards, in my opinion, was conducted, I, I realize there's disagreement. However, I believe that the neighborhood standards analysis conducted by staff does follow the definition in the sense that it used lots that share common access. And also they are all landside lots.
We, we shouldn't discuss the merits of it. I just wanted to see if your recommendation was to continue it. I just popped up to me. I think the item you're talking about that just came in was someone submitted his correspondence, two thousand and five staff report on resolution. That's what you're referring to, Commissioner Maza. Is that correct?
No, I'm, I'm referring to the actual resolution and staff report.
From two thousand and five, right?
Right.
It was just submitted as correspondence. It's not a change in the official staff report from staff. Okay.
My point is staff did not, did not give this to us. Passed by the planning commission, determined that the basement daylights, all of the basements on that street, and that
the neighborhood. Commissioner, I, I don't want to get into a substantive, substantive debate about the, the neighborhood character issue, but, sorry, neighborhood standards issue. But I understand your motion. Your motion is, is, is to approve the agenda as proposed by staff, with the differences being to move up item seven A, B, and C to be after the consent calendar, and then also to continue item five C because you would like extra time to review this, the, the, the correspondence that was just submitted. Is that, is that accurate for your motion? That is a proper motion.
Yeah, I, I, why do you call it correspondence? It's a staff report by the city.
It, but it was submitted as correspondence. That's what I'm seeing right here.
Well, the city sent it out, but it is. I don't know, it's semantics, but it's, it's.
Okay, it's, 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 it's showing evidence from the, from the two thousand and five staff report and resolution. It was submitted. It's not a change to staff's actual published staff report. That, that's the clarification I wanted to make. That if we'd done that, then it'd be a different situation than just having a other evidence submitted that was, in this case, from two thousand and five, an old staff report. So.
John, John, it sounds like it's a substantive matter. We should discuss it in the hearing. If indeed it's a basis to continue it, there may be other bases that we want to, other information or whatnot that we want to throw in with that too. So.
My point is nobody got to read it. Okay, and, and it addresses two, two major parts of the project. It gave a neighborhood character variance for three-story building because the basements did not daylight. After the law was changed, it's very specific. And so I think that it's got to be considered. You don't read things on the fly and, 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 you know, it's got to be considered by staff, number one. When I asked staff for this, they, they did not know that it existed. And then they found it five minutes before the meeting. So that's why I'm saying we ought to consider, but not, not, nobody having read it, you know, the public having read it, or this is something that actually passed the planning commission and exists, exists. It's not somebody's opinion. Okay.
I don't want, we shouldn't discuss the substance of it, else we're going to call the item. But, but I, I think you laid out the basis for your motion. Your motion is still to continue to, to approve that the agenda as proposed by staff with the changes of moving items seven A, B, and C until after the consent calendar, and then also continue item five C. You do want to make that motion? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, do I hear a second for the motion? I, I like the idea of opening the item, and if there's other stuff, other reasons to continue it. John, I think you may very well have a valid, good reason to continue it, but you know, it seems like, let's, let's see what else there is that's on anybody's mind.
Yeah, I might, my, I just, the only point I want to make on this is, we're supposed to have open and free de novo hearings, and when the information isn't available, you can't do that. I mean, it's just the way you proceed in these kind of things. But if you guys want to change that, it's just an appeal, another appeal item, I guess. But when you don't have information to hold a hearing on, I've read it. I'm the only one I know that's read it. I read it twenty minutes ago. You read it maybe five minutes ago. Public has never seen it unless they were around fifteen years ago. So that's why.
John, the issue we're stuck on is whether, whether we continue it now or we continue it after we open the matter up. We're not, by not agreeing with you that it should be continued now, nobody is expressing any opinion about whether it should in fact be continued. We're just saying procedurally, do we do it now, or do we wait and let you make your motion when we get to it? That's all that's at stake here.
Okay. So.
Okay.
Anyone amend my motion?
Okay, okay. Yes, you can, you can amend the motion. There was no second. So if you want to amend.
Okay, then I I guess I just take five C off and say discuss it. Well, I don't know. I guess take five C off.
It, it would be just to, to approve the agenda as proposed by staff, moving up items site seven A, B, and C until after the consent consent calendar. That's all you need to do. And then when item five C is called, then you can make a motion at that point to continue it.
Five A and five B, staff recommended continuance.
Yep, that would be part of the motion.
Okay.
Is that, is that your motion then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, roll call on that then?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yeah.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, do we need a, we need a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, so now we are on to item two A, public comment on matters not on the record. Do we have anybody wanting to be heard?
We do. Our first speaker is Joe Drummond.
Joe, are you there? Can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Hi, Honorable Planning Commission. This constitutes most of what I wrote as a letter to the editor to the Malibu Times last week. At last Monday's city council meeting, there was finally a successful outcome after a year of turmoil and bad decisions. After much public demand, the release of the Silverstein harassment investigation happened on exonerating him, as well as the denial of the after-the-fact build with multiple variances for Malibu Country Inn, which your majority planning commission originally approved. As you're well aware, they did not complete proper geotechnical studies for building on a hazardous slope, plus being adjacent to Zuma Lagoon wetlands, to name a few things not to code. Two weeks ago, Malibu Times front page reported last January sixth, there was a landslide in the Malibu Road landslide assessment district. It caused damage to the water main and a gas line and closed the road. We don't know if it caused any damage to any homes. Only a few months ago, your majority and city council approved a project just west of that slide with a variance for the factor of safety for an after, a new after-the-fact build with zero geological study. Planning based their decision on another property's geo-report, which obviously was not to the codes. Staff also minimized the fact that there was ever a slide there, which is just irresponsible. I am quite sure the city is now forced to pay to repair all the damage. The lack of geotechnical et cetera studies on builds in the area with their increased mass and water usage negatively affects stability on top of constantly approving variances for factor of safety. The first variance for factor of safety was also recently approved by your commission and city council in the landslide area of my neighborhood in Big Rock, putting us all at great risk. This is not the first time this has happened in Malibu. There was just a slide at Cliffside Drive on Point Dume on November first, where several homes are threatened. And on YouTube, there's footage of the slide nearby only four years prior. There are many more. I hope with this denial of the Malibu Country Inn and recent slide at Malibu Road, that the city staff do diligence when it comes to these regular disasters, especially in the planning department approving new development in these areas. Variances for factor of safety in Malibu must be limited. The planning department must stop making it so difficult for fire rebuilds and small projects and easy for large-scale projects. It needs an overhaul, to say the least. To start, there should be regular training of staff, council, and commission of all the codes and how they should be properly applied. And concessions need to be made when it comes to fire turnarounds, et cetera, for in-kind fire rebuilds and small projects like small decks like I've been trying to permit for over a year now that really need to be fast-tracked through administrative plan review if exempt from building permits. The vision and missions, mission statement should be at the forefront of all planning decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Drummond. Our next speaker is Norman Haney.
Yes, gentlemen, can you hear me? Yes. Okay. First of all, I want to thank all of you for your service to the city of Malibu. The average person has no idea how much time you folks spend, the planning commissioners spend every single day trying to prepare for these meetings and to provide for a fair and just hearing for the people that have projects. So I want to thank you for that. Now, moving on, a friend of mine, Reg Brown, is an ocean engineer. He's also a structural engineer and a civil engineer. And he asked me if I thought it would be a good idea to for him to make a presentation on the truth about sea level rise in the Malibu area and quite frankly, throughout California. And I thought it would be a great idea, since so much of what we hear, especially from the coastal commission, is simply not accurate, or it's not put in the right context. I'm specifically referring to probabilities. There's probabilities curve, curves, and the chances that sea level rise is going to go up three feet, four feet, six feet, is all based on probability. And Mr. Brown is an expert on sea level rise. He's been studying it for well over thirty years. And I think he could make a presentation which would shed some light on how the analysis is done. And he could do it in probably twenty minutes. And if you'd like me to move forward and try and set that meeting up with Reg Brown at the next planning commission hearing or the hearing after that, I'd be happy to do that, and he'd be happy to make the presentation. You might be surprised in some areas, the relationship between sea level rise and tectonic movement of the land causes the relationship of sea level rise to the land to go down. So in some cases, sea level is actually going down while the land is going up. Anyway, it's, it's, it's interesting, and I've heard part of his presentation, and I think it'd be very interesting for you to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. We have no other public speaker signed up at this time. If you are in the meeting and would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please use the reaction button to raise your hand at this time. And I don't see anyone indicating that they wish to speak. I believe you could move on to two B.
Chair Hill, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just said, now we're on to two B, and Rebecca, yeah, okay, I'm ahead of you, but I'm silent. All right, who'd like to start? John?
I'll start. Okay. I appreciate what Norm is, is telling us about getting a presentation on sea rise and sea level. There's another item that came up this week, I believe, or last week, where the coastal commission, we, we had approved a house for the clients on Trancas Creek and PCH on the ocean. They got appealed to the planning committee, to this coastal commission. It's the last house on what's known as Broad Beach before they get to Zuma. And the clients apparently agreed to a permit that required what I consider onerous documents they had to sign. And I think we need to be well aware of this because it's, it's going to affect every single sea rise decision we make, and that is that they mandated the sea rise. They moved the house back. They banned any future or present seawall or any repair. But they also established the policy of managed retreat, which is their intention for the whole coast. And that the client signed a document that said, if the ocean ever got near their house, they had to tear their house down. So this is similar to what happens in Hawaii, but this is serious stuff for Malibu in the long run. And it was, as I understand, a unanimous vote. Pretty much policy now. So I think if we have a report by Reg Brown, we need staff to report to us what the new requirements of coastal are, or at least what they appear to be. So we don't send every project we have up to coastal commission. We don't have staff time to do that. Or to, to argue the appeals, especially if they're in Santa Clara or someplace, Santa Cruz or someplace. So I would like to have us have Reg Brown's presentation, and at the same time, staff's Brown, staff's at least understanding of what this new policy is, since it's going to affect virtually every single house that's at sea level and not on, on the cliffs. So you can, all can weigh in on, on the presentations, but I don't think many people are aware of that situation. At the Business Roundtable last week, Don Schmitz also went over part of it and, and agrees that it is extremely serious. So that's that. Now, let's see here. And I would also like to request that every year, we, when we update our, our website, we lop off all the staff reports three years ago. And we get, we get projects all the time that are, that are referring to something that happened three, four, five years ago in our deliberations, and, and we used to have up to ten years of this stuff on the website. Storage is cheap. In fact, it's probably a tenth of what it was five years ago. The stuff's already on the website, so I, I'd like to have staff just not eliminate it. So for example, you know, something like the staff report that came in late tonight, we, that's a law old one, but in most cases, we can look it up instead of finding out about it five minutes before whatever. Or putting staff through a whole bunch of work to find it. So that's just a recommendation to staff. It has nothing to do with anything we can do, and that's it.
Okay, anybody else? I think I saw Jeff's hand first.
I agree.
I agree. I think it would be, I agree with John. It would be useful to have Reg Brown's. Give us the basics and it would also be useful to have staff fill us in on what it. What it thinks the coastal commission is doing. Records retention is probably a, something that's been dealt with at the city council level, but I agree with John that the more, you know, storage being as cheap as it is. The more staff reports and resolutions can be retained so that we can look at them, the better. That's it.
Okay, Dennis.
Yes, I, I think Mr. Brown speaking for this is absolutely a good thing. So I'm glad that was brought up. To Ms. Drummond's comments on the slides, I will tell you that. Most of the landslides I have fixed and worked on in this town are manmade. So there are broken sprinkler line, there are bad drain line like on Cliffside that she said. The one on Malibu Road didn't appear to be in the city right away to make that start. Looks like it was up on the person's property at the top of the slope. So whatever happened there wasn't, that's not a city problem. Although it turned into a city problem unfortunately with the water line and everything that happened down there, but. Most of the time these slides are, yes, we have them, but that don't always happen that way, but most of the ones I've repaired, they're manmade. Thank you.
Okay, and I will, I guess first reply to Norm. Norm, sorry, you called me about this a while ago and I meant to get back to you sooner, but I had already previously put in a call to coastal asking if they had. Some educational unit or if they wanted to be making a presentation down here. And I got some initial interest from them and they said, yeah, we've got somebody that we'd like to have come down there. And then I haven't heard anything more from them yet. So. I think the notion is that. Coastal is the authority in this case, and you're right, the probabilities are important to understand, but I think from our perspective as planners or planning commissioners. That we have to be on, on pace with what the authority in this regard is doing and thinking and expecting. So. I think it might be helpful to hear from Reg Brown, but I think it would be even more helpful if we could get it straight from the horse's mouth. So I'm, I'm, I'll follow up on that. Secondly. This is probably generally for council or the general public, but I just think in terms of raising awareness. There's just something really next level happening on PCH with over here in Big Rock, we've had three. Deaths within the last month or so within a half mile of Big Rock. The typical speed in front of moon shadows is fifty-five to sixty miles an hour. I mean, that's normal. And staff, when I talked to the public works, they said, no, no, people go forty-five. Well, yeah, no. Yesterday we had two accidents within an hour of each other, right at the pier and in front of the beach in about thousand feet up. Saturday there was, or last week there were somebody doing donuts at Topanga that had the whole highway closed for an hour or two. And then this, this last Saturday, there were several hours of racing in the middle of the night. It sounded like. I don't know, a hundred or more cars going up and down the highway. Something, we, we need CHP back in the mix or something. And this, again, this is for council, but I think we need to be making some noise about this because it seems like there's been a quantum shift in the enforcement level. Finally. I'm a little confused. This is really a question for staff about the, the. Appeal zone and what's appealable in it or not. I have seen it both ways that either if. Any part of the site is in the zone, then the whole project is appealable or. Or no, it's only appealable if the project itself is in the zone. Maybe staff can clarify that when we get to staff questions in a moment, but I saw that Lauren Doyle's hand was up and she probably wants to weigh in on the. Sea rise stuff. Is she, I don't see her now. Are you there? Oh, her hand is down. Lauren, do you still have a comment?
She's muted.
She's muted.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Right. I, I just wanted to say that wanting to talk about sea level rise and what's going on with the coastal commission has long been on our agenda. For six to nine months now. To, to, you know, talk to both city council and planning commission to, I know you all have had quite a few questions. But I also wanted to advise you that we are. About every four to six weeks, we now have a regular meeting scheduled with the coastal commission engineer. Leslie Ewing and her staff, the coastal analysts, so we can provide you. Insight as to what they're thinking. And I do agree with Commissioner Mazna's, Maza's comments that, that. It's a serious development, the managed retreat and, and the, the idea that people in order to develop their property will be forced to, you know, agree to tear it down. So. Anyway, we, we remain at, at the commission and city councils, you know. A, a pleasure for getting together with a meeting if you'd like. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Trevor has had his hand up.
Yep, I, I just wanted to say if, if the commission is looking for a report on sea level rise, I would recommend that you. Request that staff brings back an item about that staff will make a presentation. We don't. Have Reg Brown on retainer, but he'd be able to speak at that point as would the public and it could be reported to be set up that way if that is. The pleasure of the commission. It sounds like it is. Richard, would you be able to put something on a future date?
Yes, we could work to have an agenda item on a presentation for sea level rise. That's something we can totally do and have ours coastal engineering staff explain that. And then also like Lauren mentioned. We are regularly meeting now with the coastal commission. To talk to their sea level. Their, excuse me, talk to their coastal engineers to discuss sea level rise and how they're doing it so that information can be shared as well.
Richard, you could also invite them to participate when we bring an item back as well, right?
Of course.
Yeah. Okay, John.
I would also like to, we have this, these limits on outside speakers and I, I'd like to have you when and bring it back. Allocate a certain amount of time to Reg Brown in that presentation rather than. Leaving it up to us at the very beginning of the meeting to tell him he's got only three minutes instead of fifteen or whatever. I don't know procedurally how you do that, but. He's an expert. You know, and we've heard him before and, and he's not just the general public and it's information we want. So I don't want to limit him between.
Uh, John, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, but staff can coordinate with the chair in advance of that to, to set something up. This is going to be a presentation. It's not a public hearing, any particular item. So there's some flexibility that, that staff can work out with the chair.
Now, one last thing. I came through town at noon yesterday. And the civic center. Was more than dangerous. There were hundreds of cars, hundreds racing around. I had to wait ten minutes at the intersection across creek to go straight. Because there was a line of thirty or forty cars trying to pull in to cross creek and they would not stay out of the intersection. Or didn't care about the light. And from all reports, the night before they were racing. And that all the, the parking lot at the village was completely full and there's a Twitter video about it. Now, we have TUP requirements and we have CUPs. That's the planning department. CUPs for shopping centers that don't allow these things. And I'd like to have staff come back to us sometime and tell us how this can happen when a CUP. Says you have to have so many parking spaces to run your, your business and you got two hundred cars in your parking lot. They even have one of those hip hop cars that they use in East LA. Hopping up and down in the street. That's not just the city council. That's, that's us and CUPs and revoking TUPs and etcetera. And I, I think something that has to be done because. We can't have the only road in town be blocked. And I drove by Topanga on the way up there. And anybody who wants to drive into town right now, drive down there. There is a big circle. About four hundred times of rubber in the middle of the intersection. They did close the highway. It's, it's unbelievable. You can close a highway to do that. Uh, so, but anyway, I just want to have the planning department do whatever they're supposed to do about this stuff.
Yeah, Dennis, good point.
That's. You know, as a car guy and, and of course Commissioner Mazza, you are because you have a Woody. This, this is bad. You know, I, I used to go down early from seven to nine and most of the guys that go to. Car shows that have been around this stuff most of their life, we leave at nine because the businesses are going to open. So when they had the sheriff there and they'd walk through or they'd go on the loudspeaker and say you couldn't be there. They would wait until ten o'clock. And then at ten o'clock, because they said it opens at ten for businesses or whatever, that's when everybody came in. So this, this, this does suck for all of us that like cars and would like to go to a show that's closed or even, you know, a bluff spark or whenever they decide to bring that back. I know that they were going to and then it. Got called off because of what's going on down in town. So. Yeah, this is bad for, for all of us that really appreciate going in, talking with a few guys, maybe early on a Sunday morning, having your coffee and, and then getting the heck out of there in a couple hours. But that's not how the valley guys think. They're all roaring in here as Commissioner Mazza said and Commissioner Hill said, and they're just, they're just making it bad for the rest of us. It's, it's an awful situation.
Um, if there's more substance on this, let's find, but I, I think we've kind of like made the point, right, John?
Add one thing, we are going to lose the farmer's market if this continues. People are not going there. They won't go there. And the vendors are leaving because. We're losing the ability, even though we went through all this effort to open up that parking lot. It's, it's too crazy. People just will not do it. And I've talked to the farmer's market. They are losing people like crazy. Because of this. So it's more than just convenience. It's our, it's our, it's our, it's our town.
Yeah, Richard, you, you've heard what John has said. I don't know that we necessarily need a long discourse from you, but I think you probably get the message. Do you have a comment or two?
Yes, and what concerns me is I don't like the planning department being the one to be held accountable for this. These are vehicle code violations. The, and I also want to be clear too, that our code enforcement staff. Doesn't have the ability and Trevor can explain this if needed more detail. They do not have the ability to walk onto a property like that with an event like that and all of a sudden start. You know, booting people off the property. That, that's something that is handled by the sheriff's department. You know, the city's code enforcement staff is not. A tool that has a bulldozer that can go onto a property and just demolish whatever the violation may be. And so in this case, when it comes to the car shows, we have actually put all the property owners on notice. And what we did the previous year is that we did count those as events. That counted towards their maximum allowable use of temporary use permits. And so we already followed up with them two weeks ago on this matter. If it happened again this weekend and there is some photographic proof or something that our code enforcement staff can use. We will follow up with the property owners again. But I would prefer that the city not have an expectation that its code enforcement staff would be standing out there, turning people around. That is not something. That our code enforcement staff is within their purview. Trevor, would you like to add to that?
He's, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I, I can just say I know for a fact that Doug's been out there on site many times. These usually happen on the weekend, which is also a period of time when, you know, city staff is not out there. But he's been out there. I've been on, I've been on a Zoom meeting with some of the property owners over there about it. I know violations have been issued about this and it's something that. Some of them were adding additional security to take action against it, but. You know, like Richard said, you know, in the, you know, when this is going on, you know, Doug's not going to be able to physically remove people from the property. That needs to be something that the sheriffs do. And especially someone's shutting down PCH. That's something for the sheriff. So if you have information about people that are responsible for that, you know, please contact code enforcement. Doug Clevenger or you can even send it to Richard and he'll forward it to the right people. So we can do that, but we, we should get into extensive, you know, discussion here. It's not part of, you know, our subject matter jurisdiction here for the, the planning commission code enforcement, but it is something that. I know this is, he does take very seriously and has been, you know, working hard to get a solution in that area.
I'm going to make a comment to council and to the city manager for what it's worth. John?
Yeah, Trevor, can we revoke the CUPs of these shopping centers because they're not doing anything about it and. After they get their six TUPs revoked, they'll just keep doing it. Can we pull their CUPs and change them?
There's a whole process. If you are seeking to revoke someone's conditional use permit, you know, they have due process rights to, to deal with that also. So that, that is an option out there, but the, the findings are, you know, pretty difficult for that. So. You know, part, part, you know, I don't want, I don't want to go too far down this, but you know, a lot of the, you know, I've heard from some of these shopkeepers that are orders, they say that they can't, they can't stop it or they can't control it, you know? And that other people are telling people to meet in those lots and that they've been trying to stop them. So I'm going to put out security or barriers trying to stop it. You know, and so it may be a difficult thing to revoke, but there is a process available. If it, if it is something that's wanted and intentional by them. That is something that I, that, that would be an option for the city.
Okay, we in the public can bring this to council. Let's move on. Item three A, we have nothing previously discussed. Three B consent calendar, new items. Does anybody, would anybody like to pull anything from this? I think we've already heard staff wants three B two on a face. Anybody else?
That is correct, Chair.
John, you'd, you'd commented to me something about a guest house on three B three.
Three B three was pulled, correct? I mean, was staff pulled it or?
No.
Yeah, I'd like to pull three B three.
Anybody else see anything else?
I'm sorry, Craig, you said something about how we'd heard staff comments on three B two.
Um, the staff would like to make some comments on minor changes for the record for three B two.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't know. I don't now recall whether they said that earlier in the meeting or whether I heard that on the phone an hour ago.
It was actually just before the, the meeting began.
Yeah.
In that case, let's pull three B two as well.
Yeah. And if, if, if there are no others to pull, then we approve the consent calendar with the exception of those two.
Yeah, we need a motion to approve the, the, to move this to the consent calendar with the exceptions of items three B two and three B three.
John?
I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
All right, vote please.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes. Okay.
And Carrie's.
So that brings us to three B two.
And we do have a speaker who has signed up to speak for three B two.
I guess the question here would be whether we want to, I think staff is wanting to pull this. So maybe we should let them have the first word and then go to the public.
Um, if David Eng would like to indicate whether he would prefer to speak first or allow Lester Tobias to speak first.
Uh, David, you're breaking up. Your microphone is, is not behaving.
Okay.
By the way, Craig, did we ever ask public if they want to pull anything?
Uh, we did not specifically. Rebecca, do you see any hands there?
If anyone in the meeting would like to propose that an item on the consent calendar be pulled for further discussion, please indicate so by raising your hand using the reaction button at the bottom of your screen.
Okay, um, can you hear me now? I switched microphones.
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, just for the, the audience, I'm, I'm David Eng. I'm the planner for this project at. Two eight nine two six Boniface Drive. My reason for pulling the item is, is fairly minor. So just to summarize, this is a proposal for a new single family home with some accessory buildings, including a guest house. And a. Guest house office, garage and gym and cabana, pool cabana, excuse me. In the notice of decision that was issued and that's part of the packet, this is page one of that document. Under proposed project. I noticed that there was a reference to a carport being proposed as part of the, the main dwelling. And my reason for pulling is just to bring it to the attention of the commission and to strike out that reference of that carport that is not being proposed.
commission and to strike out that reference of that carport uh, that is not being proposed.
Okay, thank you, David. Um, so uh, it sounds like we want to hear from Mr. Tobias now, right?
Uh, he is available for any questions. I don't know if uh, we want to have, i- if, if the commission has any uh, questions regarding this project, uh, we can have that discussion and, and Mr. Tobias or I um, am, you know, available to address them.
Okay, um, uh, we should take disclosures on this first.
And um, are there any other members of the community that would like to speak on item three B two?
But we haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, we're doing disclosures first.
Okay.
And Da- David, can I just clarify? This is just a typographical correction?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the scope of work mentioned the carport, that is actually not a part of the scope of work.
Okay, disclosures. Uh, John?
I talked to staff about it this afternoon, didn't learn anything.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yeah, I uh, had an email exchange with David. I had questions regarding the size of the uh, uh, office auxiliary and uh, the size of what I had taken to be uh, a garage uh, related to the um, guest house that was up above it. Uh, he answered my questions. There's nothing that's not on the staff report.
Okay, and um, I drove around and looked at it from streets on all sides, just to look at the building envelope, the story polls. Um, I had email with John Stockwell, whose property abuts it on the rear side down at Blue Line Stream. Um, he's not pleased about it, but my interpretation is maybe a little bit cynical that the city would be responsive to the neighbors. Um, he did point out that the slope analysis is incorrect and I, I will get to uh, that in my comments here. I do have a couple of questions for staff, but let's see if anybody else has any first. John?
Well, I, I have a question about the fencing uh, over a half an acre. Um, and, and the proximity to the Blue Line Stream, which by the way, a couple of weeks ago was about forty feet wide. And in the past washed out the whole bridge. It cost the city a bunch of money. So I, I'd like to know if I know there's a provision in the conditions that the fencing follows the uh, code. I'd like to know if this is going to be corrected or it's considered existing and was it ever permitted?
Um, th- it's so that it should be wildlife permeable, et cetera?
Right, over a half an acre.
Yeah, staff, do you have a comment?
Uh, so uh, we do not have a record of, you know, whether or not the fence was permitted. Um, the, the fencing based on site visits looks like it was um, uh, you know, put up when the house was originally developed back in the late fifties. Um, that said, um, the city is not um, the one to permit friends fences. We do approve them as part of the um, uh, you know, as, as part of our, our planning process, but we don't permit them. Um, uh, we do, we, we have and we have included a condition in the um, in the approval that any new fencing should be come, should comply with wildlife permeability um, a- as, as well as any height restrictions.
Yeah, but my question is about old fence.
I'm sorry, the old fences.
So will this one be changed to be permeable or not? Wildlife permeable or not?
Because of that, that will be made uh, to comply, the, the existing fencing uh, will be made to comply to be wildlife uh, permeable.
Okay.
And I believe it's my understanding the applicant, uh, Mr. Tobias is um, on board with having that comply in this project.
Thank you.
The fencing and hedges, correct, David? The, the biology requirements or the conditions on the report apply to both the hedges and the fence.
Uh, correct. There are two conditions, number twenty-three and number forty um, in the conditions of approval that address um, those issues.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just note too, that when I drove by there, I noticed that the ficus hedge in the front was twelve to fifteen feet high and similar around all the sides too. Okay, um, I'm not sure of all the implications of this, but I, I tried to sort this out with Adrian and just ended up getting a little more confused, but I'm wondering about whether the director had the authority to approve this administratively because there's a demolition involved. And when I look at the LIP and the mirror language in the municipal code, um, it describes when the planning director may process administrative permits. And one of the items says if the, if it does not require demolition, this does require demolition of a whole house. So it seemed to me that that would take it into the territory of requiring a CDP and the, you know, full noticing and hearing that that would entail. Um, Adrian wasn't able to tell me why or how this didn't exactly fit, other than to say, well, it sounds like our interpretations differ. What, um, Richard, do you have a comment on that?
So Trevor, the section that the chair is referring to is thirteen thirteen one, uh, which talks about improvements to an existing structure. Uh, any single family dwelling, lot merger. Uh, where it talks about demolition is when it talks about any development of four dwelling units or less that does not require demolition. And then it goes on to talk about a money value or other developments not in excess of a hundred thousand dollars other than a division of land, water wells, uh, driveways or access road improvements required by the fire department uh, as part of properties damaged by the Woolsey Fire. Uh, this is a single family house and not part of a, a four uh, unit dwelling. And so because of that, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Trevor, we've looked at uh, construction of single family homes to include demolition. And so that is why uh, you'll find a history of these type since two thousand and four being director level decisions reported to the commission. But of course, um, if it's the, the majority of the commission here could pull this if uh, they wish and bring it back for a full hearing, but it's because of that, that it's a demolition of just one house.
You're correct.
Hang on, Trevor, Trevor, hang on. Let me just interject to, to clarify. What I'm pointing at is a language, any development of four dwelling units or less, that, that would not exclude a single family house in my.
Yeah, it's not, it's not relying on that exception though. It's relying on the, on, on uh, thirteen thirteen one eight two, not on A four. If it was A four, then there would be an issue, but it's not relying on that. It's relying on A two. So it isn't a single family dwelling. That's why. The other is a catchall. It's dealing with anything else that's four units or less that doesn't require demolition. But each of those are separate categories that are exempt.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I, I just, just heard that. I caught the same thing you caught, four units or less. I didn't know. I got another section.
Um, all right, uh, other questions have, were there any view determinations? Oh, I'm sorry. Jennings, Jeff, are you? Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I have a, there was another question that I didn't raise with David. In the staff report, there's a reference to um, it talks about how you can't develop uh, on Point Doom on slopes of greater than four to one. And it says to conform with this requirement, a portion of the turnaround will be cantilevered so that no development will occur directly on slopes steeper than four to one. The applicant has furnished a detailed slope analysis at this driveway turnaround area to demonstrate how the development will not occur on areas exceeding four uh, exceeding four to one slopes. So when I look at the color coded slope analysis, it does not appear that the, that the turnaround extends into the um, four to one slope area. So that really wouldn't have raised a question, except I'm confused about this business about the driveway being cantilevered because what it presents to me is the image of cantilevering, cantilevering development out over the four to one slope and then say, well, we're not, we're not touching the four to one slope, we're just out over it. And I don't think that's what the coastal commission had in mind when they imposed the four to one slope on Point Doom uh, requirement uh, as part of our LCP. But, but so I, I guess my question is, is that what are we talking about here? Is it really going to be a portion of the driveway cantilevered out over the slope? Or have I just misread?
Well, hang on, hang on. Before we get to staff on this, I, I, I think I want to add a little to, to Jeff's question there because there's two layers to it. One is that the color coded slope analysis does not match with the topo map. So this, the color coding shows it to be flat, less than four to one, all the way down to the Blue Line Stream, yellow on the map. Whereas when you look at the topo, the last seventy feet close to the stream gets steeper. So there's, there's a discontinuity there. And then secondly, I think Jeff's question maybe comes down to it, what is the intent of the uh, no building on slopes on Point Doom? If it's, if it's just about we don't build on steep slopes, then that might be one thing, whereas if it's kind of a proxy for an ESHA consideration, then um, it wouldn't, I think maybe to Jeff's point, it wouldn't matter whether it's actually touching the earth or not. If it's protruding into the environment, as it were, it might have some effect. So it's, is it about the terrain or is it about the three dimensional environment in some sense? Go ahead, David.
Uh, sure, and I do see uh, Mr. Tobias's hand up. He can further explain uh, his approach to this uh, uh, two, but let me just describe uh, what I encountered when I reviewed the project. So initially, the project came, came in and we, and I did identify a portion of the driveway located on four to one slopes. Um, and that's probably what uh, Commissioner Hill or Chair Hill noted, you know, in terms of the original um, uh, slope analysis. Uh, so subsequently, um, Mr. Tobias did resubmit a um, a different slope study using a different data point that, that a base point from which to um, extrapolate the different um, intervals for, for elevation, showing that um, basically if you kind of expand zoo, like focused in on that site, that indeed the, the area that we're looking at is not truly a four to one slope. If you were introducing additional intervals, um, you know, in, in, in the topography. Um, he also offered to cantilever a portion of the driveway uh, to avoid any development on four to one slopes. So um, in short, it's really kind of like a belt and suspenders approach to making sure that no development is occurring on any four to one slope.
Uh, let, uh, let's hear from Lester. John, can Rebecca please open his mic?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, hi Lester.
Hi, um, hey, real quick, can I share my screen in this deal or does that not work technically?
Uh, I'd be happy to see that if that's possible and we can.
Because let, let me, let me start off by saying, um, so, you know, I'm, I'm sitting up in an attic at four o'clock today, trying to figure out a structural system out on Malibu Cove Colony Road, and I get an email that there is a question about shrubs and, and fences on my project that's being heard in two hours. Um, now I first thought, well, i- if this, I'm sorry if there was an oversight, but that we missed saying, you know, all old fencing would be taken down and code compliant fencing would be put up. I apologize, that was an oversight. Of course, we want to take down the, the old ratty stuff and put up nice new code compliant stuff. So so I thought, okay, well, I guess that's all this is, but then apparently not. So my next question is that this notice of decision has been out there in the public for two weeks. Um, and you know, I, I didn't suggest this go this route, but I understand it because it's a totally valid project. I can defend it no problem. Um, but I'm kind of wondering why, like, nobody said anything until two hours before the meeting and why none of you guys called me, okay? You all know me, you've got my number. I could have answered these questions. But you know, there seems to be this love of theater at the eleventh hour here and you know, we'll, we can go there. That's, that's fine. So it sounds like I now need to, you know, present and, and defend this project. So really quickly, this is a fantastic project because it was designed specifically to show that we can successfully break up the total development square footage of these larger homes into multiple distinct structures, eliminating the specter of manitization while simultaneously creating a novel park-like estate that supports an active inventive healthy lifestyle for which Malibu should champ, that Malibu should champion. Now, um, and I think John Stockwell should appreciate the fact that we're breaking up these bigger houses because I know he doesn't like the big houses on Point Doom. Apparently he didn't, he didn't get that. Now.
Uh, I, I think he may have gotten that for the record.
Okay, I mean, for example, the, well, whatever, we'll get there.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I just, if there was a question for Lester, uh, but we really ought to have a public hearing if there is.
Don't I get my fifteen minutes as the applicant?
You do.
I thought we did.
We need to open the public hearing before you
Oh.
get your fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I guess we were doing questions of staff first. Um, all right.
I thought you were opening the public hearing by calling on Lester. I- isn't that what we were doing?
Let's, let's call it that. Yeah.
Wait, can I ask Trevor a question? This is a consent item. We don't have.
You don't get fifteen minutes, you get, you get three minutes to speak. Everyone gets three minutes. To everyone, anyone that wants to speak, anyone else.
You can ask me questions and I can answer them, right?
That's true. Yes.
Well, so Lester, we had a question about what's going on. What's your intent with the uh, cantilever specifically?
Right, okay. So the, the thing about the cantilever, uh, Craig, is that the staff's always allowed us to cantilever over slopes that we cannot touch. I, I, I didn't write that code. I didn't write that interpretation. Richard will back me up on that. That's one way staff has, uh, I think tried to be helpful in these situations, especially in situations where what we end up with similar in this situation is a very small portion of an otherwise uh, gentle slope project has a dip in it and a PC, a corner of your building touches it, you know? And there's maybe, there's not much you can do about it. So there's, there's two ways to do this. The first is the cantilevered approach. And in this case, oh, oh, can I share my screen or not?
I- if, if you can.
Oh, okay.
Alex, are we able to do that?
Let me see here. Oh yeah, cool. Excellent.
We don't see it.
Oh, host. We actually don't allow the public to share their screens ever. If you can send us, send, send us anything, send me an email. We can get it up quickly.
Nah, nah, it's cool. Um, it's a tiny corner of the, of the, of the lower turnaround um, for the fire department that, that touches a, a slightly steep slope. And I think in it's, it's a slightly steeper than four to one. Really quick, uh, those thing Craig about the, there, there's no monkey business on the slope analysis. When you're dealing with Point Doom, you're only dealing with four to one slopes and gentler. So we don't bother showing three to ones and two and a half to ones and two to ones and one to one. If it's, we, we build on four to one or gentler and, and that's all we're looking for. In this one particular instance where the corner touched that steeper slope, we showed what we either cantilever it or by changing the data. And also that when you're doing slope analysis, it's not the two foot contour intervals that standard, you know, buildings are, surveys are done. It's either a five foot interval or a ten foot interval. And that allows you to adjust how you, how you analyze a small section of topography. This doesn't affect the whole lot. We're not trying to get away with anything. We just had a situation where a small corner of a fire turnaround of, um, you know, touched this corner and, and the staff um, allowed that to happen. So that's my answer to that.
Okay, as this is a public hearing, I think Lester's gone pretty much to three minutes, but I don't know that we were tracking time, right?
I was not starting a clock since we didn't officially open the public comment portion of the hearing. Um.
Well, I would just say, let's let Lester, if you have a, a couple of other quick comments to wrap up, we can call that the, the public hearing and we can move on to Norm who has his hand raised after that.
Want to give him another minute, Craig?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you guys. I, I, I appreciate it. Um, this project would be approved with a coastal development hearing, although we've been waiting for quite some time and we've known about this process and this, this date for a long time and nobody has given us an inkling that there was an issue with it. Had anybody done that, fine, I would have gone through this process. Um, and, and we would have done, done the full blown hearing. Um, a- again, in general, I, I always feel like good projects should be approved in an expeditious fashion. Bad projects should be guided to be good projects, then approved in an expeditious fashion. This thing was a good project. Maybe it needed to be a little guided a little tonight on the fencing and the shrubs. I feel like we've, we've cleared up the clipped corner um, issue on the slope and, and you know, I'm here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Lester. Uh, Jeff, I think we're, we're in the public comment, but if, quick question?
Have, have we closed the public hearing?
Uh, Norm Haney wants to speak on this at least.
Let's, let's, I'll wait then.
Yeah, uh, and if there's anybody else, Rebecca. Yeah, uh, and if there's anybody else Rebecca after Norm, let us know.
Is the, is the timer not working Rebecca, if, if, if it's not, can you just give a one minute warning to the speakers?
I, I did have the timer running and he was within his final minute there, I um. Don't have Norm Haney as a speaker, but I will run a clock independently and let him know.
Yeah, we couldn't see it, so if, if they can't, if we can't see if they can.
Yeah, I wasn't on display at that time, but he, he was within his limit. Um, and we don't have uh. Norm Haney signed up to speak on this item, but he is um, raising his hand to speak in the meeting. And I will simply start a timer uh, off screen for him.
Okay, can you, can you give him a one minute warning if it's not on the screen, just so?
Yes, I will, thank you.
All right, Norm.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, first of all. I, I don't know very much about this project at all, I don't know uh, who owns the property. But I knew, do know quite a bit about the standards with regard to uh, Point Doom. You know, the whole concept of the twenty-five percent. Had to do. With how the slope. Went down to a drainage course. Because Point Doom doesn't have a blue line string. Category. That's what the city used to determine when a slope moved down towards a drainage course. If you have a twenty-five percent or steeper area that is not sloping down to the drainage course. It ought not. Be a problem. Uh, to, to grade or to build on. That's number one, because that was the intent. Number two, I'm going to talk about contours. If you have a one. Foot contour map, you're going to find a lot of places where you have uh, two feet. Of cut or something like that. Where it shows a twenty-five percent slope. And if you have, if you have less than that, if you have a, a six inch contour, they're going to have slopes that are over twenty-five percent all over your property. So the greater the contour. The more relaxed the concept is for twenty-five percent. Malibu standards allow a five percent or a ten percent contour. Uh, to determine the slope analysis. And if you do that, then you're going to find substantial areas, only substantial areas. That slope greater than forty percent. Um, I don't know if, if the contour that uh, the surveyor used. Uh, with regard to this uh, turnaround area. Is five, five, uh, five feet or ten feet and does not show a twenty-five. Or. Uh, then that is legitimate with regard to Malibu's development standards. Um, those are the two things, and one, the intent. And number two, the proper contour to use when you analyze. Uh, a slope map, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Um. Okay, and other, no other members of the public?
I don't see anyone else raising their hands to speak on this item.
Okay, then let's close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Um, John?
Yeah, I um. I just wanted to clear up. Before one on, on Point Doom and how it happened. Jeff, actually, I believe negotiated it. In two thousand and two, there was a meeting downtown. There was a, a lady named Mary Ayers who lived three houses south of this. Who put up a major. Snit, I guess, about. Esha on Point Doom. And the city. Negotiators, the night before the hearing negotiated, okay, there's no Esha. There are streams and there's provision in the stream section that covers bed and bank and all that kind of stuff. But if it's a four to one slope, it's presumed. The same as an Esha and thou shalt not touch, except for one. Provision which was a public trail. And so that was passed. There's a lot of myth about what happened, but basically it replaced Esha, except. The canyon coming up from Sunset Restaurant was mapped Esha and remained that way. So. It's real simple to think about Point Doom, if it's four to one, you don't touch it. If it isn't, if it's less than that. You get to do something on it.
Uh, Jeff?
Jeff was in a negotiation that did that.
Jeff?
Yeah, that was a great. You can call it a negotiation, it was. Negotiating with somebody who has a gun at your head, but okay. Uh, but I agree with Norm basically, I mean, with uh, Norm, with uh, John, basically. Uh, that was the trade off, no Esha, but four to one slopes, it's the equivalent of Esha. And that was the way it fell out. And. So I, I guess the question to come back uh, as listening to, to Lester. I'm not sure what he, what he was telling me, I, 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 I look at the color coded slope analysis. And the hammerhead driveway doesn't touch a four to one area. But in his discussion, and maybe he can clear this up, or maybe staff can clear it up. He was saying, well, it doesn't touch, you know, given the color coded slope analysis, it doesn't touch the four to one area, but we're willing to can a lever it, so. I guess my concern is, is there going to be a can a lever portion of the hammerhead turnaround that's going to extend out over above? The four to one slope area, that's just sort of the basic question I have. Staff or, or I guess, if you, if you can unmute uh. Uh, Lester, maybe just give me the answer.
Before we do that, just to clarify, um, as I mentioned before, there's a discontinuity between the topo map and this, the, the. The color study. Um, the whole, like seventy feet of the, the south side of the lot are steep. When you look on the topo map, but on the color map, it's just like, it's all less than four to one. So the question is, is it extending over that steeper part, or is it, is there just like a? Anecdotal little tiny steep spot within the flatter spot?
Yeah, I, there's, there's, there's other questions that really don't relate to this project because Lester's saying, you know, that the staff, the staff is just. Sort of staff's position that, that. We can extend out over. Uh, four to one slopes, uh.
Yeah.
Still avoid touching them and, and, you know, that raises the immediate question with, what's the limiting principle there, I mean, can you have a one acre? Can a levered area that, that, that covers the whole area, but, you know, but doesn't apply, I mean, there's got to, if, if. If it's staff position that, yeah, this is okay, if it's a little bit, then the question becomes, what's the limiting? Uh, principle and um, and, and before we, before I shut up, I, I want to point out that the only issue before us now is whether to bring this back. For a full CDP, that's the only thing that we have in front of us. And so we're kind of getting into the weeds and the details of the project itself, which is not a good idea.
Yes, Dennis, thank you.
Well, it says, it says here at the, at the one twelve elevation, it's a five to one. So. If it's a five to one, there's no conversation.
Uh, there's a section uh. On the, the last seventy or so feet of the lot is about a two to one. It goes from elevation sixty-two to ninety-four over thirty-two feet of horizontal distance.
We're not, I'm sorry. This corner, we're just talking about this little corner that sticks out over which on one map says four to one, but it says as the slope is analyzed, it's five to one. So it can levers out, I don't know, Lester will have to tell us, doesn't look that far.
Yeah.
It says. As analyzed and the construction's valid, it's a five to one.
Okay, yeah, and I see we're not touching the, the uh, steep spot closer to the uh. Ravine anyway, uh, John?
Yeah, I, you know, we're kind of de- beating a dead horse here because Lester said. While he didn't bother with the stuff that was too steep, they just made it yellow because.
Yeah.
Yellow, okay, which is not a good way to do a slope analysis, but when you come down to the factor of can a levering. Staff is interpreting it one way and then there's other situations where the coastal's interpreting it another way. One was a project Norm had. Up in uh. What I call, I guess. West Malibu where he can't lever the pool over the, over a cliff. And coastal said, no, you can't do that, okay, now that was more like a. Two to one instead of. Three to one or a four to one or whatever, but. It's, it's sort of a, I guess staff is making judgment calls and if they're not too big, you can can lever, if they're too big, you can't. Um, I know one thing, you can't touch the four to one slope, you can't put a support beam down on it, for example. So it all is a matter of. Degree, as Jeff said, you know, could you put a forty foot? Freeway off ramp hanging over the top of it and I would say no and somebody might say yes, but. Then somebody would challenge it, the coastal, because it's a four to one slope, you know, it's that kind of thing.
For those at home playing long, uh, a good view is site plan A one point one. If you guys want to look at your thing, you've got, you can see the turnaround hanging out over the uh. Topo area, Lester, do you have a quick comment, we can, we can.
Chair Hill, I, I do, we are getting too far into the substance on this, you know, it's just supposed to be whether to bring it back as a full hearing and we really are sort of turning it into a hearing. So if we could get a motion, just one way or the other, if there's more information.
I move, we accept uh, what? Left and file or whatever the term is.
Um. I, I have another question or two for staff, do we have a second for John's motion?
There's a motion to receive and file.
Anybody want to second that motion?
Okay.
Dennis will second it, okay, we, so we have a motion on the table. Uh, another question for staff, I just wondered um, if we had any view determinations. That this might have affected in it, like for example, from Gray Fox or something, I, I don't think there would be any, but did you look at that?
Uh, no, I, um, I did analyze the project for any, you know, view determinations, um, I did not identify any and we did not receive any. Uh, correspondence or, you know, concern from anyone who might be affected.
Okay, and then uh, one other question. There's a mechanical basement in the office. It's listed as a hundred and thirty-two square feet. But when you count, it's the measurements for its walls, it's more like a hundred and sixty-six square feet, if you look at uh, A two point one. Um. And I, I wasn't about to go through the whole thing and, and, you know, try to do the math on every room, but I just, that one room was off by the thirty square feet or so. And I just wondered if, if you went through with a fine tooth comb and checked things.
Um, with respect to the mechanical room, I don't believe I included that as part of the regular as. You know, square footage, I think the head height on that is really. Really short.
Um, yeah, wow, well, that gets into a whole thing.
Sent those at six feet, Craig, so they don't count as TDSF. A six foot, it, it's. That's the way it works. Less than six feet doesn't count, you can hang your, you can hang your mechanical system in it. And, and that's what we use them for.
Yes, I do believe that the mechanical basement does not exceed that threshold, six feet.
Um. I have a, I have a real problem with that that we went through last week, but we, we, we have something on the table here, so I think we need to go ahead and just vote on it.
I'd kind of like to get an answer to my question, is there going to be a can a lever portion of this driveway or isn't there?
Yeah, Lester, how, how far, how many inches or feet is the?
Okay, you take the corner, you take the, you take the northeast, the northwest corner of the lower hammerhead. Take that corner, go roughly six feet. Uh, down the page, so that's to the east from the corner and go uh, six feet, the equal distance towards the street. You connect the hypotenuse and now you got a little triangle there. That's the piece that we would can a lever.
So you're saying approximately eighteen square feet?
Yes.
Yeah, I call a question.
Okay, um, can we have a roll call, uh, this is, this is to receive and file?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
No, because I don't agree with the interpretation of how TDSF is being counted and uh, but I appreciate that we don't want to. Open the whole hearing and delay the whole thing and probably not get the vote going the other way anyway, so.
Motion carries.
Yeah. Okay, um, on to next item. Um, we, John, you pulled another of the consent items, what was it, it was?
Three B three.
Three B three.
Hey, it's a very simple question, uh, and I discussed it with staff. This afternoon, um. If you look at the. Well, I don't know the page number, but the plot plan, it shows where this epic's going to be. And the, there's only one driveway coming off the street, it goes directly to the garage. But on that note, note for the garage, it says the garage was rebuilt. As an ADU. And there, there is no other garage. So, and it's also has zero setback, so. My question is. Can the staff just convert a garage to an ADU? And then not replace the garage? And is this the right size for an ADU, it's only uh, you know, like four hundred square feet?
Staff?
So it's, it's my understanding that that note is actually an error, staff has not approved an ADU for, or a conversion for that garage to an ADU. So staff is proposing that we bring this back with a clarified note that that's not to be converted to an ADU. I think that's something they may be proposing in the future, but it's not approved yet.
Okay, so I should move to bring this back?
Correct. Sure.
Okay, I move, we bring it back.
Was that a second, Dennis?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion?
Is there a date to continue it too? Richard?
We can bring it back to the next meeting, correct, Jessica?
Yes.
Yeah, I meant my motion to, to cover the next meeting, which is what, the fourteenth?
Twenty second.
The twenty second.
Twenty second, yeah. Okay, that's my motion. Dennis, you accept?
Second.
Okay, uh, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And with that, we uh, move on to the series of extensions, right, uh, the seven A, B and C.
Yes.
Um, so. Um. Guess we'll start with seven A. This is um. Sorry, I'm juggling paper here now.
Is this really something we have to discuss, can't these people talk with their planner and they can figure out how long they need? I mean, what are we gonna?
They have by letter.
Yeah. Okay, um, first off, I should, uh, it, um, Trevor, it would be appropriate to make the global comments now before each of the in. We get to the individual items, correct?
And what I'd recommend is that you call the item. And then you can have a staff report, I think there are a few global um. Facts that you guys have been taking notice of, if those can be presented by staff, then those can be referenced by um, the commission. If, if it gives direction to staff to return with a resolution that would grant an extension, if you want to get all that. Um, I would, I would suggest you have staff. Presented in, in, in the, in the staff report for the first item and it can be later referenced.
Okay, um, how, how do we want to do this in terms of, I mean, Dennis has a point there, uh. I don't know how much we necessarily need to belabor it, some of these items, if you have a. Uh, concern or a question or, or you want to vote no. Then we, then we would want to hear from the applicants, but if it seems like everybody's kind of leaning one way, then maybe we don't need a whole.
Yeah, Trevor, well, we only have three of them, I, I think I would, I would recommend you just call it each of the items.
Okay.
Move them quickly.
Okay, with that then, let's call um. Uh, seven A, extension Woolsey Fire number twenty-one dash zero zero three, extension of time to submit a planning verification for non-conforming structures and uses damaged or destroyed in the Woolsey Fire. Located at four, six, one, five, via, via, Vientia Street. Um, do we have a quick staff report?
Evening commissioners, um, the item before you is a one year time extension requested by the property owner, William Cosman. He states that he's been having issues with the builder, I believe he's on his third. Or he would like to submit his third planning verification and that is the reason for his time extension. I believe also William Cosman is available for questions. If you'd like. Hope that answers some basic questions.
Um, John?
Yeah, my only question is, he does not request a one year time extension. So. Does he understand that he can get a longer one or he's going to have to come back in a year? And does he really want a one year one?
I have spoken to him, he's asked for um, just one year, he's almost ready to submit his third planning verification to staff.
Okay, if there's more. Okay, if there's more comments, I'm going to make a motion to. Request staff to bring back a one-year extension.
And yeah, Trevor.
We we do need to take disclosure and open the public comment if there were any speakers on it. Before we take a motion.
Disclosures, anybody? None? Yeah, none. And. If opening the public comment, I guess he he wants his moment.
We have William Costa Cosman available to answer questions, but he doesn't need to speak unless you have specific questions that you would like him to address.
Okay, that sounds like a good way to handle it.
And if there's anyone else in the meeting that would like to speak on this item, please indicate by raising your hand using the reaction button.
Good, thank you, Rebecca. Also, by way of referencing evidence in the record regarding some of the reasons for the excuse on this item and on subsequent items. I think Patricia, staff, the way we want to handle this is to be able to. Hear in the hearing, just generally refer to these documents. We don't necessarily get need to do a whole recitation of them, but when you draft up the resolution, yes, you do need to. You know, cut and paste and put in the the exact citations that are applicable in the in the. Particular circumstances, for example. If the issue is Southern California Edison and that settlement, then we have a reference to their annual report that describes what's going on there. There's also a Malibu local emergency city council resolution, a California state proclamation due to COVID, an LA County proclamation on COVID. A White House executive order regarding the supply chain issues. Similarly, with the state Governor Newsom's executive order on supply chain. And by sort of by analogy, an example of a state measure that assists in the building crisis in the state. And so. I think we're leaving it to staff to apply the particular rationales, given the. The reasons that have been given. John?
Yeah, Trevor. Isn't this run by the 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 city council's? Resolution and what does it have to do with state and federal and and all this kind of stuff?
Well, it's by way of evidence of that that these things, these events are actually happening and somebody not not just making it up.
No, but didn't the council do that when they passed the resolution?
I believe the request is for an extension and so I think what Chair Hill was doing was connecting, identifying what the unusual circumstances were, including, you know, the nature of the COVID nineteen emergency. And the the problems with the supply chain and these were referenced in the governor's orders and other different items. He was just providing evidence to support. I believe a motion to grant an extension in this case.
I'll go along that. I just trying to save Patricia time. Okay, now, did you close the public hearing?
We can close that now if we haven't already and I think we're ready for a vote.
To send this to staff to come back with a resolution granting a one-year extension for. Four, five, four, six, one, five, via the net.
I'll say, yeah, Dennis seconds it. Commissioner Mazza, that that was an extension of one year of both of the deadlines, correct? And and based on this.
Wanted it for. Planning verification.
It's just an extension of the 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 planning application deadline, not the construction deadline also for pulling building permit.
That's all. Is that correct?
That is correct.
They asked for.
Okay.
Hey, that's my motion.
Okay, and we had a second from Dennis, so may we call the roll, please?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now we're on to seven B, extension Woolsey Fire number twenty-one dash zero zero six, extension of time to submit a planning verification around non-conforming structures and uses damaged or destroyed in the Woolsey Fire, location sixty-seven sixty Doom Drive. Do we have a quick staff report on this one?
Yes, good evening, Commissioner. For sixty-seven sixty Doom Drive, the owners have stated that they have been having. Issues with their insurance company and also delays due to the COVID pandemic as their unusual circumstances. They initially requested a total time of five years. However, after reconsideration, they only are asking for a two-year extension to submit their planning verification. So that would be November eighth, twenty twenty-three. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, any disclosures, anybody?
No.
None? No? Okay.
I got to staff about making sure that that they understood the five-year. What that did to them, so I think. I'm just disclosing that. That's probably why it changed.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, and what opening the public hearing, similar situation available for questions? Or do they want to speak?
They can become available for questions. They're not currently in the meeting. And if anyone else would like to speak on this, please indicate so by using the reaction button to raise your hand in the meeting.
If nobody's raising their hand, then we can close the public comment.
Okay, I make a motion to grant a two-year extension to send the staff to come back with a resolution granting a two-year extension for planning verification for. Six, seven, six, oh, Doom Drive.
Second.
And to clarify, this is only the only the planning application deadline.
Verification, yes.
We have a motion in a second. I have a quick question or two for staff for Patricia. They made several allusions to the city trying to take away some minor dispensation. What was that about? It's probably true.
Clarification on that point.
Okay, and I don't understand if the insurance paid one point one million, they can't build for less than three now? You can't build a house for less than three million dollars?
Depends on square footage.
I believe it also had to do with access to the property and the new requirements for the fire department turnaround.
You're muted, Craig.
Okay, I I just said, so it sounds like they have an uphill climb. I don't know why I was muted. I didn't do it. So we have a motion on the table. Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Mazza? Vice Chairman Smith?
Yep, yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're on to seven C, extension Woolsey Fire number twenty-one dash zero one five, extension of time to submit a planning verification, et cetera. Location six, three, five, one, Canaan Doom. Patricia?
The property owners of sixty-three, five, one, Canaan Doom have submitted this time extension request in order to remedy code violation. It is my understanding that they have submitted the planning verification, however. Planning staff is unable to approve it or review it at this time because they submitted it after the November eight, twenty twenty-one deadline. So their. Application is in the pipeline. Should you provide the extension, we will go ahead and start reviewing the application. And the applicant Joseph Lozama is available for questions.
Okay. Let's let's open the public hearing.
Comment first. Greg, if you don't mind. As closure, I did speak to Adrian this afternoon. And the question came up. What does this have to do with the Woolsey Fire extension? In that it's a code compliance for. Some kind of landscaping. And it's a code violation, not a rebuild. And Adrian told me he couldn't figure out why this was. Before us, since it's it is, it's it's code enforcement number so and so and so and so and so. It's not a planning thing.
John, John, let's put a pin in that for a moment and just ask if there are other disclosures and then we'll come right back to that. Anybody else disclosures?
None.
Okay, I'll just say I did have a talk with Joseph on the phone. He described something about the. The the items involved in the code enforcement issue. It sounds like they're they're handling it, but I think John also has a good question. So back to John's question here.
Well, I'd like to ask Richard that because. I don't think we want to be doing code violations coming to the planning commission.
Richard?
Certainly, set the moment to unmute myself. And Patricia, correct me if I'm wrong, but this the property was a fire rebuild, correct?
Correct.
Would some of the work that they they did replacement work without permits?
Correct.
That replacement work that would fall under the PV. Permitting guys and that would is what, you know, we've issued a stop work order on the property and as part of the PV. It it it's both the main structure and accessories on the property and in in this case, there are two accessories, the land and. From what I was reading in the letter, and please correct me if I'm wrong here, Patricia, there was the the steps that I was reading about. And then also landscaping that were there before a fire and were replaced in the subject of a code enforcement case. And so. We have an application to remedy this, but we we have not acted on that application. And the applicant Joseph Lozama is also available to speak. And perhaps I'm wrong here, but I think the only other way to to remedy this would be to have them remove all of that development, so the code enforcement case goes away, but. As a practice, our city has always allowed folks the opportunity to try to get it permitted before requiring removal.
Yeah. Well. I all I know is I looked at Google Maps. It sure doesn't look like it burned to me. It looks like the the house is untouched, but. I I'm just trying to get a clarification of how this is for. This is presented to us as a code violation. And and so. What do we have to do with code violations? That's my question.
Trevor?
Well, the issue here, right, is is that they're saying the unusual circumstances is it's taken time for them to resolve the the code enforcement issue? Is that? Maybe you want to you want to let the the applicant plead their case if we can open the public hearing and see exactly what they're claiming as the unusual circumstances.
All right, let's do that. Joseph, are you there?
Do we take all disclosures before we open the public hearing here?
We did. I had one more disclosure I neglected, which is that. John reminded me, I did look in on base. I saw that there was a permit in twenty nineteen for Woolsey damaged repair, notably the roof. So, John, yes, the house was not entirely destroyed, but they did have some damage.
But there were not as as when you looked there, there was nothing to do with. Walkways and landscaping in in that.
It it wasn't the current issue at all.
Okay.
So Joseph, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Hill and members of the planning commission, Joseph Lozama on behalf of property owners, owners Kevin Brown and Patricia Pescucci. Tonight, we are requesting a time extension for six, three, five, one, Canaan Doom Road, and it is for two sets of side steps and landscaping that were completely destroyed by the Woolsey Fire. When I first met the property owner, I'd been waiting over two months for a kickoff meeting with planning. It was at a time very similar to now that City Hall was closed to the public due to COVID and the opportunity to interact with staff was not available. I was told by my client that the steps and landscaping had been on site since before they purchased the property in two thousand and one. An aerial photography available through the LA County Assessor's website confirms that to be true. So now, months since the initial submittal of PVWF twenty-one zero five eight. And despite what COVID has tried to do to delay us, we have worked diligently with biology, planning and code enforcement staff. To demonstrate our project's compliance. And they all agree that the current version of the project is approvable and at least environmentally impactful. So along with the trend of tonight's hearing, we are requesting a one-year time extension. Myself, along with the property owners, feel that that is enough time to complete the processing of our PV application with biology, planning and building and safety. But that said, I reserve the remaining amount of time for my client, property owner Kevin Brown, who is under the title Claire Wexler.
And we open Claire Wexler's mic, please.
And I do have a clock running, if you're able to depict that.
Kevin, or if you're there, it looks like you have about a minute and forty-six seconds.
You can give her three minutes. This is.
Oh, okay, I would just, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'll just say to Mr. to Mr. Mazza's question, yes, actually, my house, I stayed there and tried to save the property. It was burned. We did have to take the place down to the studs, which we did do with permits. We've done many permits with Malibu. In regards to the twenty years with which I own the property, the only two code violations that came to our attention, me and Patricia, my wife. We both had to leave the property and was not inhabitable during the time of the rebuild. That said, prior to us purchasing the property twenty years ago, the staircase that went down into the ravine. And the hedge with which we had a, which we were cited for code violations. Were both there before we purchased the property in two thousand and one. We did not go out of the footprint by one foot of the stairs that went down. I tried to, as requested by the city, to submit any kind of picture I had prior to that. The only picture I could find is a short one of me and my dog down there showing old fire ties and et cetera. The only thing that we did, and I did this, and I want to be very, very transparent with you, counsel. As you can tell from where my house is located, I'm not down a hidden driveway. I'm right there on Canaan. I'm readily available. The house is. This was not done under the cloak of anything. All I was told via my landscaper, because the yard, Mr. Mazza, when you look at it now, you can see it was redone. As you know, it's been what thirty-eight, thirty-nine months since the fire. But that in mind, my whole front yard, and I have ten videos to support it as I was putting hoses out on myself when it hit my house at two sixteen in the afternoon. My whole front yard was destroyed, which was originally there on my. On my original hedge where we now, where now just the ficus arrives. Prior to that, if you look to Google Earth, we had seven coral trees that were probably twenty-five to thirty years old. They were about forty feet in height. Underneath those coral trees, which was a fence surrounding the one acre of the property, which again was there prior to my purchase. We used to have coral trees and we had ficus underneath there for privacy, because as you know, a lot of people walk up and down Canaan there. And could easily look into the yard as the property sits recessed. So that in mind, honestly, the only thing I did when we got a citation on our gate, which at the time, things were going back and forth trying to get with the contractors. I was fighting with my mortgage company. I was insured by Chubb and put over a million dollars of the build out into the house and had to take every bit of it. It's been a taxing process. I see my time is running down and I see how valuable your time is. I just want to say. I did not do anything other than I felt was a kind for kind replacement. We chose because of root system not to put the coral trees back in, just utilize the hedge, and we did not go one step. Out of the square footage of those steps that were there. And might I add, the ravine that goes down there, it was only there because there was no other way that I could get trimmed. Because there used to be, as you guys all know, eucalyptus trees that went down cane and I had hundreds of. That's what ignited my property. So when I I had to have those cleared all the time at my expense. It was just over my fence and I'm sorry.
And we are at time.
Thank you, Kevin. I think I think we we get the picture. Okay, are there any other members of the public that wanted to comment? I don't see any hands on the screen. So let's bring it back to the commission. John?
Yeah, no, I I just want to make sure the applicant knows that I I don't, I'm not questioning at all. The rebuild or anything else. I I'm questioning. If this is a code enforcement issue, the answer to fix it is to to get rid of the code enforcement. Not to bring it all the way back through verification and everything. It's already been done. That's what I don't understand is why are we getting a code enforcement case? I'm just trying to get the process down, right? They've already got a verification. They they already put their landscaping back. Unless this is a new violation after the Woolsey Fire. There's no reason to have a code violation come to us. That's that's what I. I just trying to stop this from happening in the. I just trying to stop this from happening in the future if. That's what happened. And somebody to maybe Trevor can explain to me. Why a code violation, which is administrative, is coming to us?
You're not resolving a code violation. This is just a request for extension, right?
Yes. Extension to fix a code violation.
It's an extension to get the priming verification, which if granted will then enable them to fix the code violation.
Yeah.
Correct. Yes, this is. The the as as Mr. Lozama pointed out. During our period of COVID and a little over a year now. They. Rather than securing a planning verification first. They replaced what burned on the property. Resulting in work that took place without permits, which. We issued a stop work order. To remedy that stop work order. The planning verification needs to be issued. We've got all the paperwork. We haven't been able to act on it. Because it was submitted after the November eighth deadline. So as Commissioner Jennings pointed. It's the extension is to give us the ability. To process the planning verification, which would then address the code enforcement case.
Okay, I don't beat a dead horse that I can make a motion to have staff bring back the resolution granting them one year extension.
Got a second?
Fifty one. Can't.
To clarify, that's just the planning, the the planning deadline being extended, correct?
The verification deadline. Right?
Planning, yes.
Yeah, and the reasons having to do with COVID and the city's response during COVID. Okay. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mazza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Chair Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And with that, I think we are, before we get on to item five C, which is our remaining item. Is there any appetite for a ten-minute break? I think I saw a yes there. Shall we do that? Yeah. Let's call it. It's I see. Eight nineteen. Let's be back by eight thirty sharp. And turn off your cameras and microphones. Okay, where is everybody? Are we all back? Let's see, Trevor? Still missing Trevor.
While we have a minute, I'd like to tell Senior Planner Thompson, congratulations.
Thank you.
I tried to come in the other day, but you were, well, I was in, but you were in a meeting. I wanted to tell you, but now I get to tell you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thumbs up.
Do we do we need Trevor? Can we just? Oh, there he is.
Sorry, I'm here.
I didn't say anything. Okay, we're all here. We're here to discuss now item. Five C. Coastal Development Permit Number nineteen dash zero eight six, variance numbers twenty one dash zero two zero. Twenty one dash zero two one, twenty two dash zero zero one. Neighborhood Standards Number nineteen dash zero zero one, Site Plan Review Numbers nineteen dash one two five and twenty two dash zero zero one. Minor Modification Numbers nineteen dash zero one seven and nineteen dash zero one eight. And Demolition Permit Number twenty one dash zero two nine. An application to permit work completed pursuant to an emergency coastal development permit. And to allow the construction of a new single-family residence and associated development. This is at three one six nine seven Sea Level Drive. Within the appealable coastal zone. Do we have a? Staff or John?
I want to make a motion to continue this item after the commission. Gives staff input on what to come back with. Due to the fact that. Material information has not been available to the public. On a prior CDP. On this property which determined. Neighborhood. Character standards. Standards and the daylighting of the basement. And the prior variance for a three-story building. Which are super germane to the whole project. And the reason I'm doing this is we can spend. Three or four hours going through this and start all over again, because nobody's read. What? They should have been given. So, can I, what I'm suggesting is. We take input to give to staff and continue the item. Until. And then when they come back. With the staff report, they answer the. They disclose. Discuss. The prior. Determination by a prior. Planning Commission. And I and and. I do believe that. Just like the Supreme Court. You should have consistency in your decisions. And discuss them if you're going to change. Major factors. And how things are determined. And in this case. Five minutes notice isn't enough.
I have a comment, but let's hear from Trevor.
I just wanted to clarify, you guys can either move to continue the item, but if you do open the public hearing, then we do. If you do start discussing it, then we need to open the 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 public hearing and let the applicant, everyone, the public speak on the item. So it's up to you if you want to just continue it. And if you have concerns that you want to bring up to staff, you can do that in the interim before the next meeting. But if you do want to start discussing the item in detail, then we would need to open the public hearing.
Okay, well, then I'm making, admitting my motion to continue the hearing to the date, whatever staff figures they. They will need to answer these questions.
Is there a date that you would recommend continuing it to, Richard, if if it's the commission's pleasure to continue the item?
We could, Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm thinking if there is information we need to add, the, is it the twenty second of March?
The twenty second of February is the next meeting. However, that packet goes out this Thursday, so I don't know that we'd have enough time to address. All of the concerns or would be the March seventh planning commission meeting would be the subsequent.
Richard, you're muted.
You're muted, Richard.
Sorry, I was trying to use the spacebar, but I have my calendar open. And it was doing that. The twenty first of March is what I meant, Jessica. The reason being is that we've already got a number of items on the agenda for the second meeting of this month. The first meeting of. March is, there's a couple little things on there, but primarily we got ADUs. So I'm looking at the third meeting in March.
Third?
Sorry, third meeting from now, the second meeting. Sorry, third meeting from now, the second meeting in March, which would be the twenty first.
Okay, so I amend my motion to March twenty one. Date certain.
We have a second for that motion.
I'll second it for the purposes of discussion.
Okay.
And here's my discussion. Is 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 your theory, John, that that? That decisions that were made. What two 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 thousand five?
Sixteen years.
Seventeen years. That that those decisions on interpretation of neighborhood standards and. And and daylighting garages that those. Those bind us. That they bind this commission now.
Nothing binds us. What is the same way the Supreme Court can change their mind. But to do that, you need to consider why those decisions were made. They are specific to this property.
But there was a different project, right?
No, it was essentially. A bigger project because two lots were combined. Together with the same configuration basement and three stories. Because they at that time, and you're gonna have to read this, it's about four pages in this staff report.
I tried during the.
At that time, it was determined that. All the basements on the street daylighted. And that this council had changed the law. And this now became a three story building. And they needed a variance to become a three story building and they determined that by the neighborhood. Determination of the determine determine what the neighborhood was. So these are very germane things and. We should not my it's my opinion, we should not change something that is that specific to this particular project.
You're saying that the that that this prior report. Details defined what the neighborhood was that was being used to for the application of neighborhood standards and that that should be reviewed by the commission for consistency. Purposes with the information that they have before them now.
And and although I'm also saying that is true, and I'm also saying there is a major difference in interpretation. Without a single change in fifteen years of the natural topography. And that would. If and that's something that hasn't changed in fifteen years, it can't by definition. And if that is was correct at the time. Then this houses. This staff report is completely wrong. As far as TDSF. So it's 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 a it's an important thing. Both are important. They both have to do with a variance. Site plan review, a TDSF. A number of stories. Nothing has changed in the law since then and nothing has changed on sites since then. So I'm just saying it's just like the Supreme Court deciding to get rid of Roe vs Wade by getting a brief five minutes before the the decision.
Well, I'll just wait and say I I agree with John. I I find it hard to push ahead in ignorance of what may or may not be relevant prior precedent, but on its face. It sounds like it 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 could inform us and, you know, in particular. The definition of what is the neighborhood for neighborhood standards. I I had some questions about that that I wanted to bring tonight. That knowing what they had done sixteen years ago would influence maybe maybe how I think about what it is today. So. I I would like to not move ahead in ignorance.
Well.
Jeff?
Yeah, I I we've got a couple of problems. We've got from my perspective, we have a couple of bad choices. I don't like kicking the can down the road. You know, giving. Giving us another meeting that's going to be more crowded than that otherwise would be. But on the other hand, we only have four people here tonight, which makes getting a majority to pass any kind of a motion problematic. And so. Yeah, I think I'm going to support the continuance. I mean, this project has been in the works for so many years that oh, what's another month, you know, but but I'm sure they don't feel that way, but. But it's it's. It more of a problem of what it does to us, but still on on balance, I'm going to support the motion.
Well, and I think this would be an opportunity to, you know, if there are questions. Or any sort of considerations now and. Hang on, hang on, John. The question would be whether we open the public hearing and have some deliberation and so forth. Or do we just say, yeah, there's some questions hanging out there that if we're continuing it, we can address those to staff in the meantime.
I think that's the appropriate way to do it personally.
Well, I think we've just been instructed by Trevor, the appropriate way to do it is to submit the the questions to staff. Individually.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
Okay.
What he just said too.
Yeah, okay, got you. So.
So if we were to even mention what the the content of the question might be now, we we can't even do that because we have not opened a hearing.
Right.
Yeah, we're not going to make substantive debate about the the item.
Okay.
Okay, so can we call a question?
Well, is there any other discussion?
Doesn't seem to be three of us a thing and Dennis doesn't have his hand up.
Let's call the question then Rebecca.
The motion is to continue the item to March twenty, the regular meeting on March twenty first, twenty twenty two. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Our date, Richard.
Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yeah, yes.
Chair Hill.
And and I'll say yes, too, and and sorry, Riley's and, you know, we we're just trying to get this right and. Probably pretty close and let's let's. We'll be back before you know it.
Motion carries.
Thank you for hanging out.
Don't print anymore. We've already got it.
You guys. You gotta you gotta include the new information. You have to.
There will there will be some supplemental staff report, I would imagine, but you probably don't need to reprint a lot of the big sheets and so forth. Do we have? A motion on the table to do what, John?
Adjourn.
Adjourn seconded. I'll second that. Call the question.
I'm just noting the time. Commissioner Maza.
Remarkable, isn't it? John.
Commissioner Maza.
Said, yes, yes, yes.
Chair Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Vice Chair.
Right, thank you, everybody. Tough times, but you know, we're getting there.
Okay, bye bye.
Hey, bye.